I see blue cars.
No, you know what, someone asked me this. This one asked me this. No, what, started running. She hadn't lost.
I'm there running.
And I said, there's so many ways to present that differently. And he's like, what did I say wrong? I'm like, it's all right, we're just gonna move on. But like I said, drinking butts is not counting. Right, right, right. Drinking butts is not good.
Hello.
That rumor, rumor had it on that you were early.
Driving around in circles like a lost college girl.
You wanna do an app for the comments?
I'll do it, I can do it during the comments as long as I can take a motion. As long as the meeting started, I can take a motion.
Let's stand up for the invocation. Mr. Gibbons.
Good morning. Could you bow your head and pray a prayer, please? Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to see another day. We thank you for allowing us to travel safely to this meeting. We ask that you bless us and watch over us as we travel away from this meeting once it's over. But then, Lord, we ask that you bless this board, the college, its family, its friends, employees, from the top to the bottom. Lord, that we can continue to do a great mission in this community and continue to make sure that all have the opportunity to be educated fairly and properly. Give this board wisdom and guidance. Bless our president, his executive team, and every person that he works with in this college. Lord, we ask that you bless our community, our community leaders, our mayor, our city council, and all those folks who are in position of leadership across this community. And all these blessings I ask in your son Jesus' name, in whom I pray, and in whose name you may pray. Amen.
Our pleasure to listen to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Thank you for all attending. First order of business is preliminary matters. We have one big one, sir. If you wanna go.
Mr. Chairman, let me just take care of just one or two housekeeping details. Laura, the revised agenda is in everybody's hands? Okay, good enough. We had sent something out that we're gonna add to the agenda as a merch send. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I have one other. I have a revised human resources report. There's one other, and I'll speak to it when it comes. But with those two additions, we're ready to move forward. I think the item that you're talking about is, are you talking about the lightning, Mr. Chairman? Is that the item I was supposed to speak to?
Of course.
Oh, okay, I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm gonna speak to the lightning. I am thrilled that we made it as far as we did. They did a very good job. I have a nine-year-old who's up past 11 o'clock watching the game. He's still probably asleep. But anyway, I will congratulate the lightning on making it as far as they did.
I'll piggyback on that. If they come back to the Thunderdome in St. Petersburg, where they used to win a lot, then, you know.
They probably would've won it all.
Mr. Chairman, onto lesser matters. Karen, Dr. Karen Kaufman-White, if you would join me here, and your friends and family. I know two of her wonderful daughters are here.
All right. The whole room's coming out.
We have been to this drill, okay. Whereas Dr. Karen Kaufman-White, St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus Provost, has served with distinction in college leadership roles for more than 31 years. And whereas Dr. White's dedication to student success and her willingness to invest her knowledge and talents into furthering the goals and mission of St. Petersburg College have made her an indispensable member of the administrative team throughout her years of service. And whereas Dr. White, as Dean of the Open Campus, supervised the successful launch of St. Petersburg College's Applied Ethics Program that included a required course for all degree-seeking students, the first program of its kind in the United States. And whereas Dr. White co-edited and managed the writing and textbook. Whereas Dr. White has brought honor to St. Petersburg College through lectures, academic papers, and presentations on ethics to government, professional, and educational leadership groups throughout the United States and foreign countries. And whereas Dr. White was selected as Provost of the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus in April 2008 and has successfully overseen the daily activities on St. Petersburg College's largest campus of more than 8,000 students for the past seven years, empowering faculty and staff to create positive and innovative learning experiences and making sure students have access to a full range of support programs and services so they can achieve their academic goals. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Dr. Karen Kaufman-White and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, the 16th day of June 2015. Here, here.
Well, you speak first.
There's only one way I know how to say this. I've had a completely charmed life at St. Petersburg College. In every season, at every turn of events, I have been blessed with colleagues and supervisors who have given me gifts every day. There's the gift of faith in me, faith in me at times when maybe I didn't have it, so that together we were able to accomplish things that I not only would not have been able to do on my own, would not have even envisioned them. And then there's the gift of challenging me always, at the right time and in the right way, to make sure that I would stretch and grow to where I needed to be. And then there's the gift of grace. You can't be here 31 years and not have grace extended to you by this wonderful college at some point, and it was always when I needed it the most. Not because I deserved it, but because that's just what we do here. In this last season, seven years as Provost of St. Pete Gibbs, it's my St. Pete Gibbs Campus family. You know that I call this my campus. And you know that when I leave here, like many retirees from St. Pete Gibbs before me, I will always call this my campus. Just two more short things. First, this college has been so good to me and so good for me, and that means it has also been good for my family, and I appreciate that the most. And then, just a couple of words in my faith language. Here's my family, well, some of them. A representative sample. Just a couple of words in my faith language. I know you'll indulge me. I thank God so much, eternally, forever, for this college and for all of you. I love you, and I pray for you, and I always will. Thank you so, so much.
Dr. White, to commemorate your service to the college, we have cause to be created an endowed scholarship in your name. I got about this far with Jim Oliver, too. And we have created a plaque where the name of the recipient can reside proximate to the Provost's office, and visitors can both see your name and their name as they come. That we can make that effective immediately, and it will keep your name and your impact in front of us ad infinitum. Okay? Congratulations.
As my four-year-old granddaughter would say, this is the best gift ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could take one more minute of personal time?
We have all celebrated the passing of the baton from Dr. White to one of our own. Okay, so Jamelle will be taking over. I'm looking, Jamelle is doing her best. I had told her to go out there and take some names and kick some butts, and she apparently got an early start on that. Jamelle, we welcome you to your new role, okay? You'll need to open that and demonstrate it, okay?
Oh, my goodness.
Next on the agenda, recognition announcements. Ms. New, I think you're first up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Law. I'm so pleased this morning to share with you the establishment of a partnership with Junior, excuse me, the Juvenile Welfare Board of Pinellas County. This partnership will provide up to 30 scholarships in early childhood development for students of St. Petersburg College. This might sound a little bit like a partnership we introduced in May with the City of St. Petersburg, and indeed it is, but it goes a couple of steps further. This program will be open to workers in a range of daycare and home care facilities throughout Pinellas County, and it will also offer two tracks, one in toddler specialization and one in preschool specialization. Here to tell you a little bit more about the details of the program is our Dean of the College of Education, Dr. Kim Hartman.
Good morning, Mr. President, board. We are so excited to have this opportunity to start young with all of our children in the local community. The childcare providers will have the opportunity of earning a certificate in either infant-toddler or preschool specialization. This is a four-course certificate. Our students will start in the spring semester, and we have the generous donation from juvenile welfare board with their commitment to early childhood education.
Dr. Bellman?
Good morning. This is an excellent opportunity and an excellent demonstration of partnerships that we have going, and it's special because it's St. Petersburg College. We have a lot of children in our early learning programs, and they will not get to St. Petersburg College for their education if we can't get them started right. And so we will be starting them out well to get to you, and hopefully that that will be a continuation of educated citizens that will make a difference here in Pinellas County. Thank you.
Good morning. As a former Associate Provost of St. Petersburg College, I can tell you that this partnership is my dream. You would not get the quality of students that St. Petersburg College deserves unless we start early enough. And it is my pleasure that we have this association, this collaboration. More and more in our community, we need this kind of partnerships. One individual or one organization alone cannot do it, but together we can do a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions?
This is a $54,000 scholarship, and as we announce these partnerships, we cannot overstate the importance of them. I think the benefits and the value of this partnership will extend far beyond the student recipients, but as they go back to their workplace and better prepare our earliest learners, then we'll see the real benefits. So, thank you. Love to have a photo opportunity with the President and the Chairman.
Well, while you're up there, Mr. Chairman, I'll make my comments. I can tell you that for $54,000, I'll go back and be a part of early childhood education. And Dr. Law says I'm related to everybody, so, hey, Dr. Law, you gotta listen to this now. Bill. No, I was just saying, you gotta listen. You say I'm related to everybody. You're touching my Aunt Marcie there, and I won't tell you how she's my Aunt Marcie, okay? And, no, but on a serious note, JWB has been a great partner, and we look forward to working with JWB as we have in the past. This is a great program, and it is exactly what we said we were gonna do. We're gonna make sure that we get students prepared to come to St. Petersburg College, and this is a great step towards that.
Special thanks to Dean Kim Hartman, who's just putting all this together. Kim, step back up to the microphone one second, if you would. I was with some of your grant friends over the weekend. Bring us up to speed. You will be leaving for, what was the overview on that, one more time?
We're leaving for Australia for, it starts in September, for the conference to look at initial preparation of teachers. It involves 12 countries, and Florida's one of three states involved.
The supporters of this grant are?
Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Yes, just a little one.
Devron's other aunt and uncle.
Yeah, I gotta call them, too.
Kim, you honor us. They were crone about the work you've been doing with them on that grant, so thank you and enjoy the experience.
Thank you, President Law.
Thank you. On the board member comments, Ms. Bellow? Mr. Oliver?
None, other than to, again, congratulate Karen, and she kinda moves into this new phase of her life and to a retired career. Jamelle, congratulations. Don't know the story about the foot, but I'm sure there is one. But, and I think the other thing I just found out about this morning was Laura is moving on, and this is her last board meeting with us. Where's she at? Oh, behind me over here. So I'd like to congratulate her also as she moves into a new phase of her career here at St. Pete College.
Mr. Chairman, I've.
I want, I'm gonna jump in and echo Dale's comments. Ms. Laura, you have been wonderful to me. As most of you, you all probably know, I didn't know until recently, Laura has a master's degree in health administration. Did I get that right? Health Services Administration, and she is becoming a full-time faculty member. She has been an adjunct up until now, which, again, I didn't know. But she's becoming a full-time faculty member, and I speak for myself that I will miss her more than she knows. I have a bad habit of writing notes to everyone who we recognize and when people speak to us, and so literally by the time I am like out in my car leaving meetings, I have addresses of everyone so I can get all my thank you notes done and all my notes done. So, from my high-maintenance self, actually, not really from me, but for everybody. Words kinda play. I'm so proud of you. Can we give you the job?
Stand in the middle and watch us do this every month.
Thank you. You don't wanna say anything? Email to my addresses.
Other comments, Ms. Westine?
No.
Mr. Gibbons, I know you have a couple.
Yeah, I got a couple, and we'll try to do this really fast, Mr. Chairman. Number one, Dr. White, thank you for 31 years of service. It's been a blessing to work with you, always have, you always work with everybody. Well, I don't see her. She gone? Oh, she's sitting back in the back. Thank you so much for being a joy to work with. And bringing your DNA sample in this morning, I was, all right, too. Mr. Chairman, I also had an opportunity to speak. I see the young lady back here from the SGA. Stand up. I had an opportunity, and I would entreat any of the board members who have an opportunity. We have a council of all of the SGA presidents, and I had an opportunity to go speak to them in this past month, and it was a very, very good event, and I would entreat any board member if they invite you to go and speak with them. Thank you for that opportunity. We already talked about Dr. Oliver. Our Fire Training Center was named the center of the state. We should be congratulated on that, and CFO Atwater came down to present the award along with some other legislators, Chris Valla and Kathleen Peters. Congratulations to the folks that graduated from the Delta Academy. There's some good folks in there, the up-and-coming leadership, or I wouldn't say up-and-coming leadership, but people that are being prepared for leadership, and I think there's some good folks in our class, and if anybody needed training, where's Dan Bartel? He needed some training, Dr. Law, so I'm glad you gave him a little bit of training. He actually graduated, so I'm proud of him. We should've made him walk across with pomp and circumstance. And then I wanted to touch on our, Teresa Ortiz is a good friend of mine, and she received the Innovation in the Use of Technology Award, and she's a quality lady, and I wanted to say congratulations to her. And then we had two students that were honored at the Fernandez-Zapolsky Awards. The Latino students were honored, and congratulations to them. I do have two other items that I would like to bring for a motion, Mr. Chair, as board rules, and Dr. Law and I already discussed it. We had a, I won't go into much detail, but basically we had in our legislative package something that kept coming up as a St. Pete College designation, and it was not a St. Pete College designation. So I would ask that we, I make a motion that we put in our board rules that the President brings a legislative package to us in August for approval in September, because the committee meetings start in September, November, and then that package can be utilized in Tallahassee. So we have to approve the package that he brings forth, which I think is just a good step, and then we would have that to hand to legislators of here's our ask for this year. So if I could make a motion to put that in as a board rule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
And then finally, just a very quick one, and I also talked to Dr. Law about this, is that I don't have an issue with this. I have not had an issue with this, so I'm going on the record as saying that, but I think we should do it just for perception purposes. If there are any, if there's any correspondence to a board member that the emails get forwarded to your email or correspondence is, and I'm not saying it hasn't been, but I wanna make sure that we have it as a board rule, that if any correspondence that comes to a board member is moved along to the board member unfiltered and as quickly as possible. So I'll make a motion that we, that that is a board rule as well.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have, I need to express some support for it.
Yes.
It will work, except I will tell you, it will not work if people bypass the President's office or has problem resolutions. Okay, so everyone knows that's a must-have for me. I'm happy to pass on whatever. When we get stuff, we generally try to interact from my office to say, if you have a concern, the first question the board would wanna say is, have you met with the President? If you haven't done that, that's a courtesy that's generally considered a sort of good manners and good spirit. I don't mind passing it on. I mind getting it coming back to me, and I've not seen it, okay? If people are not willing to work with me to resolve the issues that they have, that's gonna be a problem. If I can resolve them, as I think we'll have one today, I'm more than happy to have people come to the board after I've done my best work to resolve their issues. So I just wanna make sure that I don't, I don't do rear-guard action on this.
Yeah, no, I agree. This is not intended to circumvent the President. This is to make sure that we see the issues that come forward, and then I have to tell you, my first question is always, have you met with Dr. Law? And I'm sure that's most everybody's question. So it's not to circumvent his office, it is to make sure that the process stays clean because individuals, some individuals will probably feel like, oh, well, if it goes to the President and he asks about it first, and we didn't get it. You know, I don't have a problem with that because I believe that the buck stops with him, we evaluate him. I think him looking at it and saying, hey, you wanna meet with me and see if we can resolve it, it's not, that's not an issue for me. Just wanna make sure that it's in place and that we get the stuff. I don't have a problem with anybody on this board. I think that everybody was gonna say, did you meet with the President? So this is not an attempt to circumvent the President because we can't, we should not individually be out trying to resolve issues for the college. That's what we pay them to do, so.
Laura Lee, you had something?
And I'll just speak for myself. My policy on this would be to ask the question, have you exhausted all your administrative remedies? And the reason, I use, obviously, good legal phrase, but we have, we have very, very talented leadership at each of our campuses, and I'm not sure that we need to, you know, jump the shark for each and every, for each and every issue that comes up. So my only request, and the way I will carry myself, is to ask whether all administrative remedies have been, have been exhausted before we, before I certainly get involved.
I think most of us do that.
Yeah. Agree. Great.
So we had a motion, it was properly seconded. All in favor?
I don't think it was seconded. Oh, did Law lead it? Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Law.
Good.
Dr. Law, comments from?
Two or three things. Our legislative friends finished at 2:00 something last night. I was gonna pass those emails on to you at 2:00 in the morning, but decided I didn't
really have to do that. We, we were not successful on the PICO project for this campus. As the experienced folks knows, we were there at the very end, which is a harbinger for not yet is the answer there, okay? Our friends across the bay seem to have a little more juice for their, their projects. Thank you trustee Bello for some really good work yesterday to try to respond ASAP, but we, we could not get it over the finish line. So, so that's good. You know, being there at the last, when the last decisions are made is, is, we can build on that. We can go forward. So, so that's that. Secondly, let me, we do not have the final numbers in the operating budget. They, we have what was decided, what, what the big players decided. We don't anticipate seeing specifics by college until sometime early this afternoon. So, we have been watching, let me say, we are watching with great interest the performance funding. There is, there were 11 standards. We've vetted those here on any number of occasions. There was a, several changes that had come with different people doing different, we wake up one day and St. Pete is 27th and Broward is 28th. The Aspen Award-winning Broward is 28th, we're 27th. We don't know what factors they're using. There's more in, more out, more, it's confusing to say the least. We'll let you know as soon as we know something. There's a lot of rumoring and all of that. Some other parts look like they fall into place. I'm sanguine. I wish I had more information to share with you. Just as we had planned, though, we're going to adopt the budget today, I hope. We will give you all the info. If there's anything that needs particular attention, we'll be right back on your doorstep, okay, and let you know what's, what's happening. Let me take one more minute. Several of you, we shared with you some really good work on the part of my staff for helping reach the students at Clearwater Christian College. That meeting is this week, the 18th, did somebody tell me, or this, the 18th. We'll be sending a team out there to work with those students. We, we have requested a pretty easy waiver from Saks. It's how much coursework has to be taken at the institution that awards the degree, but we can work with them on that. I think you guys reported on that, Ms. Bello. But, but again, our team did a pretty, very credible job of reaching out and we'll let you know how, how that works, okay? And I did want to just compliment the, the work that was done for our scholarships. St. Petersburg College Presidential Scholarships will total $455,000. The, the group had 64 students, a weighted GPA of 4.29, average SAT of 1102 and an ACT score of 25. So, we are recruiting and supporting some really good students and we will continue to find ways to, to support them even further. But, Frances and her team did a very good job modifying that program and, and bringing it forward in a little different form. So, good news. We look forward to them joining us. Mr. Chairman, I think that'll do me for now.
Thank you. We do have some public comments. I invite Ms. Eric Bank forward.
Good morning, sir. Just a reminder, the public have three minutes, so.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I thank you for hearing me. Please accept my apologies for sunglasses. I have a medical problem with one of my eyes, so I do have to keep these on. I appreciate your hearing from me. Main reason that I'm here, first of all, is to express my gratitude to SBC. I'm a recent graduate of the spring. And the academics of SBC have been marvelous and have given me a great deal of wealth in order to move forward. My dean is here, Dean Susan Demeris, who I am very grateful to as well with her program. I'm also a member of the Honors College. And the students of the Honors College are concerned that things continue to move forward and with great strength. We have a lot of questions about what's going on. We have met with Dr. Law about this already and we really left not the greatest feeling in the world from that, that meeting as well. And that's why we're here today. We would ask that the board and Dr. Law continue to keep an eye on what things are going on there, to strengthen it and to have a closer supervision on what things are going forward. I think that communication about what goes on at the Honors College and to the upper levels of the administration are not what they should be. We have done a lot of work there and that work should continue and increase because the Honors College should be the star of this school. And we have a lot of very successful people that have come out of the Honors College as well. And we really ask that that would be continued, expanded. We've always wanted to include all the campuses of SBC more than what they have been in the past. And we, we really, being left without a former director in the middle of the semester, left a lot of the students feeling lost and, and actually with the loss of some other programs there felt that they were injured. And I just wanted this, for the board to be aware of this. Dr. Law has been made aware of this and not too much seems to have changed since that time of meeting. And that's why we're here today to put this out. And that's really all I have to say about this at this point in time. I'm certainly open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Board?
Eric, thank you for coming. And I think after you and I had a conversation that you were coming to the board, and thank you, by the way, for coming. We don't push people away from, shy away from coming to the board to speak. We're okay with that. I would say this, that I've had several conversations with Dr. Law after getting a phone call from a former trustee about this issue. And I have to tell you, he's appointed Earl Freitas over the Honors College. And Earl, I think, is respected by anybody. Just about everybody in this college is, is one of the most quality educators that we have. While, you know, I won't get into human resources matters because that's, we really can't. But, what I will tell you is I, I expect great things from Dr. Freitas moving forward with the Honors College.
Any others? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. John Loretta?
Good morning, sir. Morning, members of the board. Morning. And Dr. Law, morning. As an ideal, the Honors College and St. Pete College are supposed to be the fire from which phoenixes arise. You know, this is supposed to be a place that you come to turn your life around. And sharing, or not sharing the long story of my arc, I can say that that has definitely been true in my experience. In particular, the faculty and the director of the Honors College have been absolutely instrumental in my transformation as a human being and where I am as a person now. And I'm deeply hurt by the events of what happened. I was a student assistant in the Honors College. I have been deeply involved in all of the, the activities the Honors College has done during my time here. And Dr. Law informed us that the problems with the Honors College basically all lied on Dr. Yessica Neva's doorstep, on the director's doorstep. And I'm here to basically attest to that. That has not been my experience. And I have, you know, the, the motto of the Honors College is inspiring minds and transforming lives. And it has done that for so many people. We have so many students that are now studying at Cornell, at Columbia, at Stanford. And all of us, in some small part, owe that success to the dedication and to the personal attention we receive from the faculty and from the director of the Honors College. And why I'm here and why this matters to me so much. I graduated this past semester and I had so many projects going on for the Honors College that we were working on together. And when Dr. Yessica Neva was let go, we, you know, all the projects basically went up in smoke. We were left in a lurch. We had no information. And, you know, more or less, my last memory of my alma mater, my first alma mater now, is not that you guys changed my lives. It's that you fired my mentor at the time when I needed her, at the moment of culmination. And I want to be able to come back 15 years from now, when I'm gray and old, and I want to be able to walk these halls and I want to be able to look at the kids here and know that they are getting the same from the Honors College that I got. And that's basically all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
One comment. I will say, you know, I'm gray and old, so. I can tell you a little bit about that. But, I would ask you and the other folks at the Honors College, and by no means, let me just say this, no one agrees with everybody on everything. That's not going to happen in life. And, and as I said before, human resources matters, you know, Dr. Law just gives us the report and he, and, and, and we, we, we can either talk to him about it or see if there's something else we can do to help the individual, counsel them, all kinds of stuff. But, let me just say this, that had all been exhausted. And what I would like for you to do, and I'd like for my man Eric back there to do, is to give Dr. Freitas a, an opportunity. You know, fresh start. Don't get stuck on the past. You know, I have plenty of mentors and I never stayed with them for all my life, but they are friends of mine forever.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's nothing to do with whether or not the Honors College is going to be great going forward. It can be bigger, it can be better, but it needs you guys involved in it. So, stay involved in it. Help Dr. Freitas be successful. Just because one person's not there anymore does not mean that the program won't work. We have a bunch of programs. Dr. Carver is taking over at Health Sciences. Dr. Nikotera chose to go to Houston. You know, I could have, I loved Dr. Nikotera. I thought he was great. But, you know, he didn't stay. And so, I got to work with Dr. Carver, who I think is great too, but. But, but, I just want you to know that change is inevitable and that those changes are not always bad changes. Just because you all, she worked well with you all does not mean that we were getting, we thought we were getting the best out of her at the college. And, you know, it's a pretty big deal. The Honors College is a big deal. And I can tell you, Dr. Law sees it as a big deal. I don't want him to respond. I'm responding for him because I feel like having a conversation with him, he understands how important the Honors College is. And we want young people like you to be successful. We want you to rise out of the phoenix, as you said. And we want you to continue to support St. Pete College. And if there's anything this board or Dr. Law can do, reach out to us. We are still here for you. You're still an alumnus. And the Honors College will be successful. I can assure you of that.
I greatly appreciate your time and for letting me speak.
Alright.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is review and approval of minutes. Everyone have a chance to read as their emotion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Mr. Lang.
All appears to be well.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Gardner?
Good morning. I'll echo that. I have no report this morning.
Thank you very much. Moving down to budget.
I want to hear the story about the foot, though.
I don't know more about that.
Did she really start kicking butt, Dr. Law? Is that it?
That's what I heard. I only, I repeat rumors, okay.
Unfortunately, it's not a really cool story, but the important part was I got the pedicure before I actually hurt my foot, so I'm set. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. Today, we're going to be going through the details of the 1516 budget, but before we do that, want to take a look at as we're winding down on our current fiscal year and where that budget and actuals are going. In the interest of time this morning, I have narrowed that presentation down to just two slides. Having gone through 11 months of the fiscal year, our revenues overall are currently $600,000 over our budget and our expenses are $3 million below budgeted expenses. So, looking just through the month of May, we're at $3.7 million for a fund balance. Now, what's happening currently in June and as we end June, we have some revenue still coming in from the state and some minor revenues, but we have quite a bit of expenses that'll continue to come in so that by the end of June, we should end the year at a balanced, if not a slightly positive, fund balance. Are there any questions about the current year budget?
Just a, we end up having to pay the summer salaries this month. It starts loading, okay? So, we've already collected the money. You're seeing the revenue. You just haven't seen those expenses. And they start piling up till June 30th. Then, we kick the, the next one to the next semester. So, all good.
So, now we'll look at the FY 1516 budget that we're proposing for you to approve today. As Dr. Law mentioned, they're in special session. We don't have the final numbers from the state in different areas. However, they have asked us to submit an approved balanced budget to them by July 8th. And so, we'll be going through the details of what that budget looks like. As we've been bringing to you every month since we've had the December budget workshop, our top priority this year is for a 3% employee compensation increase, which costs $3.6 million. We've also detailed in prior months, different ways that we have available funding that could offset that to the tune of $2.5 million. So, that leaves $1.1 million of funding still needed in that area, plus the $1.8 million of new initiatives that would help us meet our strategic priority goals for the coming year. So, overall, the balance of funds needed in our budget is $2.9 million. I put this slide up. I'm not going to go through all the detail of it again because the last few months, we've gone through this quite in depth. It's the $1.8 million of the strategic budget requests and the new initiatives we're proposing that match the strategic priorities and goals that you set back at the December workshop. None of those have changed, although we will be having some additional presentations after mine to give you some more focus and detail on them. But, I wanted to just note them for you again on that slide. In addition to the budget and adding compensation increase, as well as the new initiatives, wanted you to note and make sure that from a technology perspective, we've made sure to maintain an overall technology campus discretionary budget of $2.6 million that will help us keep refreshed and up-to-date on all of our technologies. So, this is a look at the balanced budget that we would propose to send to the state. It's $156.8 million. And you can see at the bottom line of the revenues in green. In order of right now to have a balanced budget to send to the state, we would propose adding a line of funding that $2.9 million from fund balance. This budget does not include any increases in our state funding or any performance funding revenues that we may get from the state. So, what we anticipate is that once we do get those final numbers, that will be able to absorb that $2.9 million. But, it does give us a balanced budget. On the expense side, that does include the compensation increase, all of the additional costs related to the new initiatives, and also does include still a contingency.
Jamel, hold on for a second. No, no, I was just, I knew there would be questions. Mr. Chairman, you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Does this budget, Dr. Law, I see athletics budget, is that an increase in their budget? Because I think they're hitting on all cylinders. Have we increased their budget or no?
Or no? I'll have to look at Vice President Williams. We've been making modest increases every year.
Okay. And then, the second one, the second one is, does it, I know that we talked about having more recruiters. Is that in this budget or is that next year?
That, that actually was in this year. We got it into this year's budget and it is maintained.
Alright.
It is tied up in that call center discussion that we're going to have later on, okay? But, yes, sir, we addressed that at, when you brought it up last year. Sure. Just so we're clear, we created a lined balance account, $2.9 million, to make the budget balanced so we can send it on to the state. The, the big benefit there is we can go ahead and implement the pay raise on July 1. If, if we don't do that, we're going to wait until the state tells us exactly how much we've got. We, we won't meet again until August. It, it means we have, then have to back up the pay raise or, or otherwise modify it. You know, I'm trying to keep things as tidy as need be. When we know what the state is sending us, we'll simply hope that it meets the $2.9 million that you see in green. And then, we'll back that out. We'll put the state money in. The budget will still be in balance, okay? So, we're essentially just covering ourselves to send in to the state to, to get the approval. It would not be my intention to spend $2.9 million out of our fund balance, okay? That is a budgeteer's trick to get us past the July 8th submission deadline.
Were there any more questions on the operating budget before we move to the other college funds?
Yeah, what happens if we don't get the $2.9?
Well, I was just going to thank you. I was going to say that. Last month, we actually showed you a million dollars' worth of cuts where we would go next if we're shy at a million dollars from the $2.9, okay? And we can reprise that if you want. We, we're, we're adults. We understand. We're giving it our best, but we don't control all the variables. So, we've already identified a million dollars in either defer programs or slow down or re-scope them. So, we would be, if it's below 1.9, we'll have to make some additional cuts. But, we are ready for any number between 1.9 and 2.9 to execute a budget. And, and I think that's pretty good budget work, quite frankly, a million dollars' worth of contingent. And, and I think that's pretty good budget work, quite frankly, a million dollars' worth of contingent expenditures.
So now we'll go through the other fund budgets, the first one being our student activities budget. We're projecting revenues for next year in student activities of 5.3 million. Right off the top of that, the SGA organizations across the campuses receive 25% of that budget. So there's $1.3 million that would be distributed to each of the SGA campuses to spend as they deem fit. The athletics budget is 1.3 million, and then the remaining two and a half million is other student support services and activities that the college represents. That does leave a contingency of $260,000 in that budget. Our auxiliary budget, um, contains revenues related to other areas outside of just straight our state funding or our tuition, and we're able to use those for other things. And so a lot of the money, um, actually transfers over to the auxiliary that we make. You can see in the revenue, some of the revenue generators, um, we bring in bookstore commissions, um, food services and vending royalties regarding to our ethics textbooks. So we really focused then on being able to use those monies to further students. You can see at the bottom, the transfer out to other funds, that's the budget that's actually transferred over to the operating budget. So you see that as a revenue line of transfer into the operating budget of 3.6 million. Even with these transfers over, our auxiliary fund is still healthy with a fund balance of $6.6 million. To further explain a little more of the 3.6 million that goes over into the operating budget and what that does support, $900,000 of that goes to student textbook credits. $300,000 of the total $500,000 student assistant budget is funded out of auxiliary. The expansion of the Workforce Institute that you approved a few months ago, that $407,000 is included in that. We fund $114,000 for senior citizen waivers. Continue to support, uh, reducing the student loan default rates. And then 1.7 million related to academic and other institutional programming support. So those are things like additional library resources, marketing, supporting K through 12 initiatives, uh, supporting FGO scholarships, those types of things. Our scholarship fund, that's mostly an in and out fund, so most of the revenues that come in then go out by the end of the year. We're estimating a $61 million budget, 50 million of that is related to federal awards, 2.6 million from financial aid fee scholarships, 6.7 in State of Florida scholarships, and 1.4 million in our foundation and other scholarships. And then our capital outlay budget. It's overall a $30.6 million budget this year, only 9.7 million of that is recurring. So that's based on, um, the, the student fees that go into that. 2.3 million funds our construction bond payments. $16 million will fund current major construction projects, which I'll detail on another slide. 5.1 million for deferred maintenance and infrastructure. And then the remaining funds are related to campus-specific discretionary funds and projects. And then we do fund out of this account a little over $1 million for our internal construction personnel. We have included a $542,000 contingency budget, of which 383,000 is recurring. Now, this is another budget besides the operating budget, where depending on the decisions that are made up at the state, there could be additional funds coming in, which I'll show on another slide. This shows the $1.8 million of campus discretionary money. So by campus, it shows you the major equipment budget, the renovation remodel budget that each campus receives, and then also if there's specific special projects that we're funding related to each campus. Some examples of those would be at Allstate, looking at the restrooms for fire science, um, the dental chairs at the Health Education Center, and the, um, rework that we did this year in transforming and refreshing the collaborative labs at the Epi Center. The major construction projects that we're funding this year, I've included in the middle column, the total project budget, even though that's not the total amount that's budgeted just for this year. So we have our current Midtown Education Center that we just have a slight $2.9 million as we're continuing to finish that up. The Clearwater Library we're funding with the city, um, estimated to cost a total of $14 million. So we're trying to fund that with funds each year building on it. So this prior year, the budget was at $5.7 million. For 15-16, we've added another $1.3 million to get to $7 million, and we just need another, that other extra million to be fully funded for the Clearwater Library.
Can I interrupt you on the Clearwater? Why did we add 1.3? Is that, is that some, is that an agreement with City Clearwater, was there a deficit somewhere?
We knew that we would need to fund $8 million of it, and we didn't have all of that right then in one-time money. So as we look at what money we believe is left over for one time, and all of the other things that we have to prioritize, then we're looking to add to get up to that overall $8 million by the end.
But, but both partners have remained committed to the same dollar figures, no one has backed it.
Correct.
That's where I was going.
That was really a, a smoothing of the curve as to when we need the money and when we had to show it up and how we were doing our overall budgeting, so that's, that's within the balance.
I just didn't know if we were picking up more of the tab.
No. Bay Pines at $4.7 million, and then still working towards the current Midtown purchase of $1.3 million. So as we stand today, we're looking for you to approve the proposed budget that we can submit to the state. Currently open in the special session, we still haven't included into our budget our final state program funding numbers, what our performance funding might be. On the capital outlay budget that I mentioned, we haven't included any new money related to major construction funding if we were to get that, or if we were to get any additional new renovation remodel funding that would add to our capital outlay budget. So the state has asked for us to submit this balanced budget by July 8th. Once the final numbers are done, they would like for us to, to send in an amended budget. So when you come back to the August board meeting, we'd be able to present you with that amended budget to approve, and then we would send that amended budget up to the state. Any questions?
No questions? If I can have a motion?
I'm sure that we accept the budget as given to us by Ms. Connor.
Second, hold on, um, any discussion?
I, I just have a brief comment, and this is more just for public perception. This is something where we have had budget items come to us each meeting for probably the last six months. So this is not something where this is the first time, and I realize everyone in this room understands this, but this is not the first time we've seen these numbers, this is not the first time we've seen these proposals, and we, we know that there is a backup plan, and we reviewed that backup plan based on that $2.9.
I appreciate that, we worked very hard to, to do a revenue focus, and then a projects focus, and then a, uh, an expenditures focus, and then pull it all together, and then continue to, to take your direction from the December workshop, so, uh, let me, let me finish, we've, we've got the votes, I think. But I, I think if you look at the items that are in there, once again, I'm very proud that the overwhelming focus is, you know, obviously this year to make sure we, we take care of our employees. But once you get to the projects, they are so focused on supporting our students, supporting our, our instructional programs. I mean, there's really nothing in there that I wouldn't be proud to see on page B1 of the newspaper for, for any of the, the things we're doing. It, it, I think continues to move forward, great leadership on the campuses, great leadership with the deans, and certainly I've asked the three vice presidents to, of course, be, be at the table when the final budget is, is developed. I'm, I'm quite proud of this, and I recommend it to you. I suspect we'll have to do some amending, a little here, a little there, when we get to August. But, you know, with your leadership, the focus of this college on its students and its mission is, I'm having as much fun doing that as I've ever had, so thank you for your support.
Is motion properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
So, so passed. And Mr. President, once again, with the administration, thank you very much, keeping us informed for the past six months on how we were doing. Moving to focus areas, the first one is Ms. Stubbs, disability resources.
It's a little like the federal government, you have to vote on the budget to find out what's in it, okay? So now we're going to have some presentations on what you just voted for, okay?
Good morning, Dr. Law. All of you here today, we are, I'm really grateful for this opportunity to talk to distinguished Board of Trustees, and to let you know a bit about why we're asking for those specific items on our budget and some specific focus goals we have for this upcoming year. First, briefly, we'd like to discuss why these various disabilities are increasing and what we're going to do to serve our students. Our focus areas, we need to focus on, number one, how we are going to reach out to these students from beginning to end, to see what we're going to start, what we're going to finish, and then identify critical areas for not only staff and faculty to support them, to, but also to look at, what are our students' expectations of our department? We look at the idea of the DR staff and what their specific areas of interest and focus are. So we have dealt with getting them into focus groups to help focus on not only the students' expectations, but also staff and faculty expectations, to help get those online revitalization plans cohesively matched to what we need to do as a department to reach out to all students. Part of the onboarding process has been much paperwork and a long process for students. But what we want to do is, we want to emphasize the ability to process, to make sure that things are streamlined, to make sure that things are evident to students from the very beginning, that we are welcoming and we're here to assist them, but also we're here to assist faculty and staff. Empowering every individual that walks in our rooms and our offices, and getting us more visible within the campuses as part of our main lead measures as well. Purposeful, efficient communication. So that means we are going to go out into the community as well. We've already established partnerships with the Pennsill Center Agency Networking Council and Department of Education to work on transition programs from even junior, senior year on, to help students and parents identify that transition piece, which sometimes with our population is very difficult for parents to transition their students into a higher education. Our strategy focus areas, people, obviously, our students are critical in that area, but deans, academic chairs, making sure that not only those people that are working with the online programs, we have to look at accessibility aspects. We just did a Q and A with our faculty regarding, um, online issues with accessibility. And we're going to continue workshops every month on our campuses and online and create a hub for, uh, resources for our faculty and staff. Our frontline staff need to look at different issues such as if a student is escalating a behavior, what do you do with that? So we want to, we're working with security, we're working with all types of frontline staff to make sure that everybody is trained and they know what to do in advance, so that we become more of a proactive department instead of just reactive to what if something happens. Processes are very key in what our overall goals are, enhanced accommodation intake process. Right now, everything's paper-based, and if we have things streamlined and online, so that even our online students can register with our department, and that they see clear, concise measures in advance. I showed you a bit about our student expectations, but we also have expectations of our students, and we want to make sure those are clarified in advance, so that our faculty know exactly what the students are expected to do, that they are to communicate with that faculty member from the start for appropriate accommodations, and also for, so that everyone's on board with what assistive technologies we have to assist our students, and there are no surprises with that. The facilities, remember, we are about access, but not just to, uh, online environment in, in our classrooms, but also to, from the time someone steps into our buildings. So we're working with all of those areas, with ADA compliance reviews, modified furniture inventories, and assistive technology. Some students are going to college now that couldn't 20 and even 10 years ago because of the, what we're doing every day and the assistive technologies that we're utilizing for these students. And then agencies are critical for the support of our students, and we work tremendously with those agencies. I mentioned the Pennsill Center Agency Networking Council, Abltrust, Vocational Rehabilitation, Division of Blind Services, we're working with those to support those students throughout, from the beginning to the end, from the time they graduate, and even after with our new career focus. So our DR enhancements for this year. Number one, training. Enhanced training and professional development, a plan for the DR staff as well as the faculty. I mentioned the online revitalization, we've already met with Michelle Piper and Dr. Calerick in making sure that all of those instructors starting off know about our program and what we have to offer from the start. Staffing, making sure we have those captionists for the growing deaf and hard of hearing population, as well as our returning veterans. And then increased administrative support, so that we have responses to students in a timely manner. Create an accessible information management system, so that those students can access from online programs on through if they were requesting accommodations, that we are also, we're looking at that as from, they, when they inquire with our office, it is tracked throughout that point on, so nobody is lost in the shuffle. We don't want those pending students out there that request accommodations or that come and inquire with us not to get those services, so that we can ensure that they get the accommodations that they need. Any questions?
Just briefly, what kind of legal, what kind of training within, and I realize I'm not talking about law school class, but what kind of, um, what kind of legal training are folks getting? Um, I think that it's one of those where if everybody knows what the rules are, I, I think it makes life a lot easier. Are we increasing that? I mean, there's a lot of talk about training.
Right.
But is that training to get somebody through the process, or training what somebody, somebody, what the rules are?
Uh, it's both. We have a, a new revamped ADA 101. Uh, I've been working a lot with Ann Marie Root on making sure that that's mandated from the very start. We have a shell in, in Seidel as well, to make sure that not only those students understand, you know, what their rights and responsibilities are, but that the faculty know from the start what it means to, um, work with someone with a guide dog, or how to work with an interpreter, because all of those aspects are important, and, and we realize that. So most of what we have right now are in binders and, and things like that, but, and we, we're revamping our faculty types of resources guide, and we're digitizing that so it's available for all, in oncoming faculty as well as, um, current faculty. Yes?
Thank you, first of all.
You're welcome.
Great presentation. I look forward to seeing, um, the success of this program. I can tell you, I think Dr. Williams and Dr. Gordon and a few others got tired of me calling them saying, "What are we doing with accommodations?" Because I didn't know, and I would get asked that question quite frequently in the grocery store. And, um, it looks like we have a, we've revamped this thing and we're, we're trying to, I, I really just want to make sure that our faculty knows, this is what you said, the rules and how we accommodate people.
Right.
I think some students felt like they weren't being accommodated, and, um, this is a good start. So I'm looking forward to getting a report next year of where we are and how it's going, so, thank you.
And I'm looking forward to giving that to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Smiley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Law. Standing with me, Professor Tara Newsom, wonderful. Standing with me, my colleague, Dean Demir, wonderful team, without question. One of Dean's retention completion goals is to expand the use of civic engagement as a way of furthering support and improving student success. And one of the budgeted items to be used to help expand civic engagement is the Center for Civic Learning and Community Engagement that we talked with you about before. As part of our effort, we sought to do a preliminary assessment of student civic engagement at SPC. First, I'd like to share briefly some information gained from two of our surveys, one involving students and one involving faculty, and then conclude with the budget. First, the students. The results of a survey of 906 students we completed in January showed that 41% of those surveyed said they had never worked together with someone or some group to solve a problem in the community where they lived. And an additional 30% or so concluded that they have not done anything in the last 12 months to impact people in the community where they live. Students, faculty. The results of a survey of 145 faculty members completed in April showed that 58% said that their students do not take part in any type of civic engagement volunteering as part of their courses. That's 58%. And of the faculty who said that their students do take part in some type of civic engagement or volunteering as part of their courses, on average, 30% of those students continued to serve the community after they participated in that volunteer effort. And that clearly indicates to us is where they tend to get started with this type of mindset of serving, they tend to continue. It's a large percentage, and we know that we're going to work to in, increase that. Faculty offering civic engagement opportunities in their courses included a range, service learning, volunteer service, as well as civic learning. learning, volunteer service, as well as civic learning. The nature of the civic engagement projects, they vary, I'm very pleased to say. Students working with agencies, students performing community service to directly help people, and students working in this particular case to also have a positive impact on the environment. So in those cases where they're engaging in civic activity, in this case, it involves a range of basic natures in the courses in which they, in which they operate. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Law. With the center in place, we believe that we're going to have an incredible impact on our students, on this college, on the success of our students, and on the community as well. We project that we will be able to increase by 25% the number of courses with civic engagement activities tied directly to them. We will do that in 2015, 16, increasing it by 25% the number of courses that will have that. We've got the team in place to do it and we know it will happen. You can count on it. We also will say we project that the impact on civic engagement in this case as relates to our students, we're going to double the number of students currently involved in civic engagement activities in 2015, 16. That's to say, we're going to look at the numbers that we have now and we've done that. And we're going to double the number of students that will be involved through their classes and other ways in 2015 and 16. And then having said that, then we close by simply saying that the budgeted item of the Center for Civic Learning and Community Engagement is $35,000. And we then look forward to working in such a way that you'll be more than pleased about the impact of the utilization of those dollars on our students, on faculty, on the community at large. And we thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. This is where you smile.
We already approved it.
Can we answer any questions though? Because I think one of the things that I think in the future will be really great to put next to this slide is student service utilization because what we know is civic engagement really allows us to, you know, utilize our resources and our investment at the college and student services. So I think what we're going to be able to do next year is not only show that increase, but then put it next to our student service utilization, which I think you'll be really pleased with.
Dr. Law, this is going to be housed at the current Midtown facility? Is that the deal? I know it's going to be at Midtown.
We've got somebody on each of the campuses, but then the, we're housing it at Midtown, okay?
The current Midtown.
The current Midtown.
The King Center.
The King Center. So it's going to be our first real program inside that facility, so we are going to fill that up.
It's going to be awesome.
And then secondly, thank you to all of you for, for this, this report. I know it's been a long time coming, but we, we got it in the budget and it's, I think it's a good thing, number one. Number two, Ms. Newsome, thank you for volunteering to help get students trained on the history of Midtown and they're going to take people on tours the day of the grand opening of the Midtown facility. And that is going to, I think, the start of the volunteer effort. And so individuals that will go in, so at the new building, they're going to have the history of our community up on the walls and, and these students are going to be trained to know how and where and all this started and how and what was there and they're going to take them around the building on, on guided tours. So thank you all. I, I see this as being a great success going forward. Thank you.
I'd just like to see in nine months from now, I'd love to see those statistics again.
Oh.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to make an impact. I'm very excited about this project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Women on the Way, Ms. Crumley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Law. I am Shirley Crumley, the Coordinator of the Women on the Way Program, and I am so happy to be here today to share with you the Women on the Way Campus-wide Expansion Simply, the mission of Women on the Way is to encourage and engage our students to stay in school, graduate, and become self-sufficient. That's what we're all about. Currently, the full range of services are only provided on the Clearwater campus. So our students have to drive or take several buses to the Clearwater campus to benefit from program services. What we propose is to duplicate what we have on the Clearwater campus and place it on four other campuses, Midtown, Seminole, St. Petersburg Gibbs, and the Tarpon Springs Campus over the next three years. The slide you're currently looking at captures the campuses where our students are currently taking their courses. And as you can see, about 48% of our students are over the age of 36 or older. Most of our students, 81% of our students to be exact, are enrolled part-time working on their two-year associate's degrees. Some of, some of our, wait, let me go back one. Oh, some of our more popular services is our clothing boutique and our weekly workshops. Our students get to shop weekly for casual and professional attire. Some of our weekly workshop topics are financial planning, healthy relationships facilitated by our very own Dr. Williams, self-esteem workshops, financial planning. Our very own Mrs. Bello came out and presented her BizWomen.com organization to our, our ladies and we really appreciated that, Ms. Bello. These workshops are instrumental in empowering our students to make life and career choices. Here you can see the growth of the program since 2010, which is about 49%. Now, we do have expectations of our students. We call ourselves Wow Warriors because of the many hats we wore as women. We expect our students to participate fully in the program and participate fully in the college experience. We like to measure our success rate, our retention, and our persistent rate. Success rate is defined as students receiving an A, B, or C in their courses. Retention is term to term, and persistent is year to year. And as you can see, we maintain over 75% rate for the last academic year.
Excellent.
Let's talk about the expansion plan. That's the exciting part. We plan to roll out and, to start date with our Midtown campus. As you can see, we'll do Midtown this fall. I think in your packets, it might have said summer, but since we didn't get the opportunity to present last month and we're presenting now, we've kind of moved Midtown up to fall. So Midtown's going to roll out in fall, fully functional, ready to roll. In spring, it'll be Seminole Campus, this time next summer, St. Petersburg Gibbs, and so on and so on. As you see, we're going to need personnel to operate these programs on these campuses. We're requesting about a little over $240,000 to support this expansion so that we can grow the program, touch more lives, and especially, especially provide services to students on the campuses they are attending their classes or where they live. Ooh, campus leadership is excited. I am excited and the students are excited. They've been asking for Women on the Way Wow to come to their campus for the past three years and now it is here. We have identified space on our Midtown campus. Thank you, Dr. Gordon, Tyrone Clinton, we have identified. We're ready to start our hiring process. We are ready to begin to spread the love. Are there any questions? Comments?
Sorry. Are you going in the new building or are you going in the current King facility?
Trustee Gibbs, I try, I've tried my darndest to get in that new building.
Okay.
But we're going, we're going to be in the Cecil King building, so I'm still excited.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. I just, it's going to be there. That's all that matters.
I try.
And then secondly, I, I just want to give kudos to Dr. Law and the rest of staff.
Absolutely.
And, and yourself. Here's an example of when we talk about being the college for everyone, we're, we're doing that. And this is another way that we are retaining students and making sure that they are successful and that we keep them on the right track. Now, I'll tell you, I would have flunked out of Women on the Way because you got to make an A, B, or a C. So I might have been in trouble. But thank you and this is a great program. I'm glad the board was supportive of it.
Thank you so much.
And it looks like it's going to do very well on those next four stops and, and that you have a good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Dr. Chapin, update us on the Bay Pines.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Law, Members of the Board. I'm Jim Wechter with your Facilities Department and along with me is Dr. John Chapin, Dean of our Science Programs here at the college. Our intent today is to give you an update on the progress to date at the Bay Pines Project. A brief history, we came to the board in January and at that time, you approved our guaranteed maximum price of just under $4 million for the project and you, we discussed and showed you some decisions that have been made to date specifically regarding where that building may go and some other program, programmatic evolutions have occurred since then. So we're going to rely on Dr. Chapin to give us an update, beginning with that site designation. So I'll turn it over to Dean Chapin.
Good morning, Board Members, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Law. I thought we'd have a little outdoor touch here. So this is a shot looking at where the building will be down at our Bay Pine site, just to refresh everyone. It's right by the VA Hospital across from Hurricane Hole, which is now free, I think, of all boat carcasses. So I think we're making some progress there. Let me just say a couple of words about the mission of, of the center. The center is a hands-on STEM learning center. This is a place where we want people to come to do science, not talk about science and other STEM areas, for the public to be able to come see science in other STEM areas in action and for students of all ages, not quite all ages, but at least middle school on up, to get excited about STEM. We have designed a facility that does not have a designated classroom in it because what we do not want to happen there is for people to spend time talking about science and showing PowerPoints. We want people to do things. And so we've had to evolve the facility. When we started designing the facility, it's, it's a task or process that one of my previous colleagues said, did I do that? Okay. One of my previous colleagues said, it's like letting the genie out of the bottle. You let the genie out of the bottle and you wish for everything you can get and then the money hits the table. And so then you get realistic and some of the genie goes back into the bottle. But I think we've come to a conclusion of a very, very interesting facility that we'd like to share with you today, what the, the most recent plans for are. This is a little bit about how it will look from the parking lot side. Understand, there's no finish on this. This is just the building structure. We're looking for a coastal feel to the building when it's all done. The parking lot will not look like this. It will be much more vegetation-heavy. If you think about the Bill Jackson facility and look at that parking lot, this is what we're hoping to achieve here. The building is looking towards Hurricane Hole, so the causeway is on the left side of the photo, just to get you sort of oriented. It will stand, the floor of it will be 12 feet above ground, so you'll be able to see across Hurricane Hole all the way to the mainland. This is, again, an exterior view looking at the, I believe it would be the northeast side of the building. It faces the, again, faces the water. A lot of glass in the building, so when people walk by, you can see what's going on inside. And people will have amazing views looking out over the property. This is the building looking towards Hurricane Hole. We will have an amphitheater on the outside and you see it there. It's actually going to be relocated to the end of the building for some, for some flooding issues and other sorts of things. But so, so people will be able to come down and students will be able to sit on the, on the stairs of the amphitheater and classes can be conducted. It'll be wired with all the various technologies that we need to use technology out there. And ultimately, there'll be a boardwalk from there down to the water and a dock down at the water. So theoretically, someone could bring a group to the center, conduct some activities on the stairs, point what they would like the students to do wandering around, then maybe go out and put the kayaks in the water and do some collecting of specimens. This is what it's going to look like at night. When we saw this the first time, it took everybody's breath away. It's going to be a spectacular, iconic facility for the college. It's visible from the causeway, so everybody that drives by will know it's a St. Petersburg College building. But the thing I think I'd like to leave you with about it, this can change the way students look at science, technology, engineering, and math. We have a companion project where we'll be creating a virtual environmental learning lab on this property where you all will be able to walk around out there with your smartphones, point it in any direction. It will tell you what you're looking at. It'll give you history of it. It will give you current physiological data, anything that you'd like to know biologically about what's going on there. And that will be available on the web and available to anybody with a smartphone or tablet. So I think you're going to really enjoy it. I hope that you will schedule one of your board meetings out there when this thing opens. We're very excited about the prospect of finally making the Bay Pine Center a reality. Any questions?
What is our proposed open date?
Approximately a year from now, probably late July, early August of 2016.
Is this, is this proposed to be what I'll call a full-time campus? I don't, I'm not sure. It, will it just have labs there?
It will be.
I mean, what are we, in a day, give me an average day, how many, how many classes or how many labs?
There will probably be, on an average day, I would say, three to six mostly lab classes there of hours. There's a multipurpose room that will be available for community groups to use. It will have a full-time executive director, so it will be a full-time center. There will be probably a continuous stream of small independent student research groups that will be using the labs there. One of the labs is set up to, to support multiple independent research groups. We, we envision these as being combinations of students from public school, our students, maybe students from Akron College. I am reaching out to them in another couple of weeks, thanks to Tom Furlong. Those would be ongoing, I would say, pretty much all day long. Certainly, community groups using it in the evening. It will be a full-time center that I think will be very active. We're trying to make it so it's 50% supporting S P C students and programs and 50% a community resource that people in the community can go and use. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
It seems very weighted on the community and not on students, but that's not for me to make that decision.
Um, I, that may be the way I've explained it, but I think that there will be plenty of student activity out there. On our Clearwater campus, for example, we probably have 150 to 200 students engaged in independent, outside-of-class research projects. Many of those are marine and environmental and so that work will move to the center.
Okay.
All of our environmental science faculty can't wait to move their classes down there. Our marine biology classes, as you might imagine, can't wait to begin to move their classes down there. I'd like to see some of our general education biology classes taught down there so they could have a more environmental slant to them. I think, I think there will be a waiting line to have classes moved down there to, to be supported because it's going to be a very unique environment.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions?
Is it contiguous space? Like, looking at the picture, it looks like it goes, you said there was no dedicated classroom, so is it just big wide?
There's no dedicated classroom, but on the left-hand side there, there's three labs. The two on the, the two on the right in the middle, the one on the right and the one in the middle are designed to hold 24 students. The one on the end will have facilities to have three independent research projects going on simultaneously. The cla, or the lab rooms, or all, the whole facility is designed to have almost no fixed furniture in it. Everything can be moved. Even the labs will have plug-in lab benches. So you put the tables together in a lab arrangement, literally in 15 minutes, you can unplug them and make them a classroom. The storage cabinets in the independent research labs, if a group comes in there and does a project and they're in there for a couple of days, they can then pack their stuff up and lock it. We can move another cabinet in and another group can come in. So we're anticipating probably anywhere from six to a dozen different research projects going on in there at all times. But we, we wanted to encourage it to be a place where things are being done and not simply be talking, talking about because it's easy to take a lab arrangement like this and convert it into a classroom setting. It's impossible to take a classroom setting and convert it into a laboratory. It's impossible to take a classroom setting and convert it into a laboratory. But the tables are arranged in what's called a dog bone pattern. They're on a triangle basis, 120 degrees between them. Like I say, there's seat 24, so there's six of these tables. And all the utilities are in the floor, so you can plug in when you want to use it as a classroom, unplug it. Put the tables in any arrangement you want, and you've got a classroom. So we've got, we've got ability to have classes there. But what we want to emphasize is classes with lots and lots of lab activity there.
That's the key.
What's the square footage?
Pardon me?
Tall square footage?
It's right at 10,000 square feet. We have a multipurpose room that'll seat somewhere from around 100 people, 80 to 100 people. Again, very flexible. It can actually be divided into two meeting spaces, so you could have two simultaneous groups going on in there. We're working with a lab consultant that's an international person who's probably designed labs for every university you can think about in California. And the point he makes with us over and over, we'll build this this year. In five years, we have no idea what may be going on in terms of research in there. So we want to build a facility that's the most flexible facility that we could conceive of. So it'll, it'll, it'll support any kind of activity that we want to do. Plus, we're going to have the environmental learning cloud outside for people to walk around in and collect data and observe.
Thank you.
Break ground, what's, what's the schedule?
Yeah, early August, I think.
Ship sails.
John's being a little bit disingenuous. He has worked exceptionally hard, you'll see it when we get to Midtown, too, to make lab time, not classroom time. I think John's working premise is no PowerPoints in lab. And what we've tried to do is reserve as much capacity here for doing science, as opposed to sitting in a chair while somebody teaches you some basics of science. You've got to learn that part, too, by the way. But then when you're doing it, we want, we don't want to tie up stuff for hours on end that can be done elsewhere. So I think John and his team have done a really good job trying to make this as robust as we can envision it. And we're ready to go.
We've had some excellent, excellent input from faculty. They have been really, really key in making sure this meets faculty needs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving down to administrative matters.
Mr. Chair, I do have some questions, but I make a motion that we accept items B1 to C1 and D1, with some discussion from Dr. Law on...
D1?
D1.
D1, yes.
Make a move, I make a motion that we accept those items.
Second.
Properly moving second, discussion. Another discussion? Come on. Before we take our vote, let's go ahead and discuss it before we-
That's fine. Yeah, my, my thing is, Dr. Law, the, I'm sorry, on B1, I mean, I'm sorry, B2, A. That is simply where, are we renewing the program? Where the folks getting the bus passes again?
Yes, we have a presentation on that. Okay, oh, I don't want to pass around, we have students here.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine, I just want to make sure that we're renewing it.
No, 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 it's even better than-
I've heard some good things about it, so I wanted to make sure that-
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I lost track here. I was, so we are on administrative matters.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And B2A, thank you very much.
That was my question.
Can I invite this, Mr. Chairman? We have two students who, I see one student. Where'd, where'd the other young woman go? Oh, okay. She'll, she'll learn her lesson, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me get my notes out. Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Law, and all the members of the board. My name is Ms. Nikki Johnson, and I'm the Vice President of the Midtown Campus, our new building. I can start off with my part first, because I don't know what her part was. Basically, I was just asked to come and tell you all the good reviews that we've received about the program, from the students on the campus. It's very beneficial to our students. It's a very important resource for our students, not only inside the classroom, but outside of the classroom as well. It helps the students get back and forth. It's one of what I like to call a no-excuse pass. There is no excuse for you to get to school. There is no excuse for you not to do your tutoring services. There is no excuse for you not to participate in the, in the activities that we plan for, for them. So it's no excuse. They have no excuse for nothing. So we do ask, as, as, as a campus leader, that you guys extend the program and continue to allow us to use this important resource. Any questions?
Hold on, wait a second. We have a much better presentation than that. Where are the charts?
Well, Dr. Law, though, I think she came up with a slogan and we should put her up, no excuses.
No excuses, I love it, okay.
Some posters.
I don't need a, I don't need a presentation, I like no excuses, I'm going to go.
Please go ahead, introduce yourself.
Good morning. I apologize.
No harm done.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Law. My name is Alexis Clavizio. I'm the President of Downtown Student Government, and I will be giving you an update of the PSTA U-Pass. As you may recall, you approved a one-year agreement for this program. And SPC ridership has been very, very high. Many of our students use it to get back and forth to class. As well, this five-year agreement has been approved by all the Presidents of the Student Government Association college-wide. And also, it will be funded through the Student Activities Funds. And it provides a tremendous benefit to all of our students. Now, I'll hand it over to Nikki for student feedback.
She did it.
I'm giving my feedback, are there any questions?
Perfect.
That's good, we're good.
Are there any questions?
What's the increase in ridership? Do we know how many of our students actually have the passes and utilize them?
You go back to the last slide. It's back to the last slide. It's 13,000 in a year, and basically, well, in a year, we're up 30 grand, 30 grand riders. And those are actually rides and not riders.
Okay. That's still, hey, that's still-
Right.
That's even more impressive.
We, let me help, okay. And then you, first of all, the students put this together, and we're delighted to have you here today. And I know you've been instrumental in this. We started off with $85,000. We ran a check for $85,000. Anyone with a St. Pete College ID can get on or off the bus, can transfer, can do, you're in. $85,000. You see what $85,000 bought us. We removed the transportation issue as an impediment for students, okay? Took a little while, students to get, you know, you've got to learn what, no excuses, that's our stuff. The success of that, working with our friends from PSTA, and who did they tell me was here from PSTA?
Mr. Cochran, he had to leave.
We want to lock this in. So we locked in a five-year commitment. In fairness to PSTA, costs go up a little bit, but I think in the end, five years from now, we'll be paying a little over $100,000 a year. So the five-year commitment, if memory serves, is right at 515 or something like that. I just, I think it's one of the stunning successes that we've had at the college. I salute the stu, it's another one of those deals where the, when, when the administrators sat around, there was always a problem why we couldn't do it. When the students got hold of some money and, and got in their own group, they figured out how to get it done. And I asked them to be here today so we could celebrate them, and we can celebrate a very important part of what we do. So this has my full support.
I have one more question, Dr. Law. I know we have a stop at every campus, but the bus did not go down 22nd Street. Dr. Gordon, we ever get it to go down 22nd Street?
Yes, it goes all the way down now.
Thank you. I'm in full support.
We'll have to reride it for Grand Ole today.
Well, that's all right. As long as it'll go down there any other day.
We're closing the street.
So now we, the bus will stop right there on 22nd Street in front of the Midtown Campus. So, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Start, can we have a discussion about the call center?
Yeah, could I just check? That, that's an action item, I think, is it not?
Which one?
The PSTA can-
They're all-
They're all, oh, they were all under one? Okay, great, yeah, good, great. Okay. We've got a brief presentation on the call center. Let's get up and done and answer questions, okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, President Law. My name is Pat Renaud, Associate Vice President for Enrollment Services. My goal this morning is to provide you with a status report of the call center that we, that exists today at St. Petersburg College. Provide you a little background on some research that we've been doing and how we would like to move forward. Our current call center was established in 2010 to serve all students, not just those students taking online courses. It is mostly staffed with OPS, which is Other Professional Services, non-budgeted employees who are part-time. It's a entry-level position, and it's low wage. There are a lot of competitors for call centers in the Tampa Bay area. There's a lot of turnover with the OPS staff that we hire. Once they are trained, they're very knowledgeable, and they're often internally promoted and hired as entry-level staff in a full-time budgeted position with benefits. What they do is basically answer entry-level calls related to admissions, academic advising, financial aid, and registration, as well as answer questions from the general public. This team does not include the team that answers questions from a technical help desk perspective or the team that supports our current My Courses Learning Management System. The challenge that we've had is that with high turnover and during high-peak periods, we experience, our students experience, long wait times to be served, and often, we have high abandoned call rates. In the summer of 2014, we began to research the idea of outsourcing our call center. We looked at several companies. Diana Sabina and I actually toured a facility and saw a modern call center and what it can do. Some of the benefits of outsourcing include, we can establish in working with that, with a vendor, guaranteed service-level agreements. For example, we can have it in a contract that they will answer phone calls within X amount of time, two minutes. Or all calls will be resolved, or 90%, whatever threshold we want to establish, would be resolved on the first call. And that we would have an escalation system in place. That they would provide trained, dedicated staff. We would provide the training to that staff initially and ongoing. They would hire a dedicated team, roughly eight to 10 individuals, to service St. Petersburg College. And despite the, the current technology that we have that is state-of-the-art around the college, our call center technology, we cannot keep up with that technology. Some, some of the technology that Diana and I observed last year, based on an incoming phone number that an agent sees that the call's coming in from, they know exactly why that caller is calling before they even pick up the phone. And it's hard, that's not our niche, and it's hard for us to keep up with that. So earlier this year, we issued a request for a proposal to outsource our service. And we did that in February, and we had five vendors respond. And Blackboard was the vendor that was selected as the top vendor. Blackboard has a long history in higher education. They were established in 1996. And then a division called Blackboard Student Services was established in 2003 to really focus in on the full student lifecycle and supporting students remotely through contact centers. This is some information about Blackboard Student Services. You can see there that they have over 1,000 advisors in their contact centers. They have over 500 clients, over a 90% satisfaction rate, and over 7 million contacts with students each year. And you see at the bottom some of the, of their current clientele. This is a Virginia, Virginia Community College system. And you can see, I want to draw your attention, to 88% first-call resolution rate. And then the quote down at the bottom, where they say they don't have lines as a response, as a result of outsourcing their call center. I wouldn't expect us to be able to say that, but this could impact and reduce the lines at our campuses. This is Ivy Tech Community College in Indiana. Draw your attention to the top right, where they reduced their wait times from 19 minutes to 30 seconds. And a 91% first-call resolution rate. And then the Kentucky Community and Technical College system. This is some data from, from that organization. Again, 90% first-call resolution rate. And they use Blackboard not only to receive inbound calls, but for, for making outbound phone call campaigns. And you can see, they collected in a seven-day period, $2.4 million in student receivables as a result of making outbound phone calls. I'm sure that's around the time that tuition is due. So what we are recommending and seeking your approval today is to engage in a contract and negotiate with Blackboard Student Services and to enter into a contract, a two-year contract with this organization at a cost of approximately $613,000 per year. You see at the bottom there, 612,750, to be exact. And that we would provide, we already have resources that we throw at the call center internally in the, to the tune of 345,000. So that the net need, annual need, is $267,404 per year.
How many calls do we get a year?
The request for proposal was to answer 150,000 phone calls per year. We received nearly 200,000 last year, but when we analyzed that data, many of them are repeat phone calls from the same phone number, because we could not answer the calls fast enough.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Laurie. So, just one clarification. In Dr. Law's memo, it says not to exceed 1.3 million. In yours, the presentation, it says not to exceed 613,000, so-
Two-year.
Ones for two, both. It's a two-year contract, not to exceed.
Two-year, not to exceed.
Per year.
That's 613 per year.
That's the total two-year contract.
613 is-
613, okay.
Yeah, so here it says the count-
When we bid the process, we require, we requested a two-year quote. We're concerned if we sign up for one year, we will have violated the RFP. So I'm going to sign a two-year contract.
Okay, no, you're fine. I just, because the memo says two-year contract, not to exceed.
The next number I get, that's rock solid, will be the first number that I get that's rock solid.
No, 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 no. I understand, but I, the memo says not two-year contract, not to exceed a million three. So that's why I was confused. Number, I'm sorry? Number two is, what, what was the move to consolidate? Is this, we couldn't answer the calls? We could not, we couldn't, couldn't answer?
Yes. Mr. Kevin, we are not serving our students well in the current model. We did this in 2010 as an internal approach, using predominantly part-time, low-wage personnel, again, with a high turnover. I'm convinced that it's not sustainable, and we're, our abandoned call rates are too high.
70% abandoned call rates, okay. Twenty-minute wait times.
I'm fine with outsourcing, believe me, I'm, I believe in it. But I guess, I, I mean, I just want to make sure that when he tells me we've exhausted all of our remedies in trying to get this thing accomplished internally, because I think, I want to make sure that we get the same quality, too. And if you're-
Look, we're losing 70% of our-
No, no.
That's a pretty low barrier, okay.
We can only go up.
Yeah, exactly. But I want to make sure that sometimes you can expand the call center internally, as we do in our company. And we, we continue to get better quality people, because they're internal to the organization. But this obviously didn't work, so I just wanted to make sure that we know what we're doing, we outsource here.
How are we going to let our students know we've done this?
We can communicate that. It should be transparent to them, frankly. We're going to train Blackboard. We're going to send a team of individuals to one of their contact centers in a classroom setting with that dedicated team of eight to 10 individuals. We're going to do in-classroom training with them, and then we'll do ongoing, continuous training. So it should be seamless to them. The 90% first-call resolution, obviously, that that leaves 10% that need to be escalated. So they've got a ticketing system where that will be, our advisors, our cyber-advisors, will go into that system and work with those students that they, they cannot help, because there's a certain level, a baseline of information that they'll be trained to answer.
So when somebody call, give me an idea of a-
So when somebody calls, give me an idea of a question somebody asks when they call in. What's like the number-one question?
Have my transcripts from Hillsborough Community College been received?
So somebody asks that question, is there a set script that they go through to answer that? And is, do the call center people have access to that data on their screen and...
Today, yes, they do. And in the future, yes, they will.
So it would work basically the same? It would just be a center somewhere geographically different than on the campus or...
That is correct.
What is their contact back to the campus? Is it directly to an advisor or somebody if they can't resolve it? How quickly does that come back to us?
It will, it will immediately go into a ticketing system and our advisors will be monitoring that system. And I'm sure we can work with them to send, proactively, proactively send us an email communication to our advisors to know that there's a student that needs to be serviced.
So there'll just be, there'll be a ticketing system and then it comes back to us through that ticketing system? But what's the time, you don't have the time in between the two yet? Like, there's no contractual relationship, that it has to be within twenty-four hours or...
We've not worked out those details yet, but within twenty-four hours would be too long, in my opinion. Twenty-four hours would be too long.
Me, too. Okay.
What are, what are the number of calls that like BCC is doing and some of those other, and Tiberacan College?
It varies. You notice on the first, they have a thousand-plus advisors and five-hundred clients, so that's roughly two advisors per client. We're going to be one of the larger customers, but Maricopa's, you know, they're pretty big.
Got it.
That's Phoenix, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Ivy Tech is the entire state of Indiana. Maricopa's, Phoenix, Tidewater, it's about our size. The Kentucky Community and Technical College System is really pretty high-end and, I mean, this is a blue-chip list of clients that they have. Ladies and gentlemen, people have worked very hard at this and I'm always awkward of bringing you something kind of on the fly, but we don't have our arms around the problem given the approach that we currently have. We can't hire people fast enough. We can't supervise them well enough. We can't, it's not our core mission. We don't have the technology. If you've ever been to, Mr. Gibbons, you work in a call center. It's, it's a different environment than having friendly people answer calls and say, "How can I help you?"
You know, it's kind of like the discussion that we had a year ago about collecting bad debt and things like that. It's just not what we do. And I do, I do agree, we need, so from the budget standpoint, so there's a delta here in the difference of what we're paying today and, pull that slide back up.
Right.
The two-sixty-seven, which over two years, a little over half a million dollars, is that blended into the budget?
We will, for the fifteen-sixteen budget, we will identify additional funds, probably from one of the reserves to cover that, but it will be in the operating budget on July one next year. Okay? That was really the issue of choice here, is handing me a, please sign for two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars. So I think we have finessed it for this year and it will be the number-one item on the budget for next year. You will see it, okay?
I think this is the only way you can resolve this issue. Dr. Law just asked that in negotiations process, drive down and get some really good deliverables so that we make sure that we're getting exactly what you think we should be getting.
Brian, our team has been Mike, Patrick, Mike, and Brian Miles, along with some other folks. So we've got some people who know of what they speak, they know us. Look, our students, dropping seventy percent of the calls and having a twenty-minute wait, I mean, everybody's angry by the time we get a chance to engage them, okay?
If you were a service business, you wouldn't be in business very long. You'd be out of business.
And that was my whole point. My whole point is, how are we going to tell our students that we've changed? Because I'm guessing that we got a lot who've just given up. And so that, right, exactly. And so my point is, is that to make the most of this, we need to let them know that we have, we get it. We messed up, we fixed it. Here you go, now let's, you know, give us a second shot.
They'll, one, we can do that and we can do that. Secondly, we're kind of a victim of our own success. As we have been very more proactive in communicating with students, guess what phone number is on everything we send students?
Call center.
Okay. So we're driving all of the calls to the bottleneck. I mean, we're talking about five-thousand calls a week at some places, okay? And we're dropping seventy percent of them. And meanwhile, we're sending postcards out that afternoon with that same phone number on it. So we think we have stopped the bleeding. Those folks, these folks, with your approval today, these folks will be in town the twenty-fourth?
Correct.
So we think we can even take a bite out of the problem before the August registration. We think we can make at least some improvements quickly and then roll it out in the fall at the deep level where they have access to all the information, background, and everything else.
So based on the discussion that we've had, I would recommend that we move forward with the recommendation.
Second.
Thank you.
So the motions accept six-B, C, and D, and that was properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to consent agenda. Have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was quick.
Did that include the president's evaluation?
It's next.
Okay. You sure you want to do that?
Let me go ahead and read a quick summary of the president's agenda. During the month of June, Dr. Law will have completed his fifth year as president of St. Pete College. As required, it's the responsibility of the board to perform an annual review and evaluation of his performance over the past year. Board members have had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Law individually and to complete a written evaluation assessing his performance. The categories reviewed included, but not limited to, leadership, diversity initiatives, budgeting, board relations, and external relations. I've had the opportunity to review all the evaluations and I'm pleased to report that they are, once again, exemplary. His charge been hired, including strengthening the college core mission, renewing community and school district relationship, advancing technology, facility enhancements, and supporting and developing our employees, all of which the board feels he has and continues to advance and accomplish. This year, we have witnessed substantial growth toward full implementation on the online re-vibration, major restructuring in workforce education, and recapitalization of corporate training, our certificate programs. Major restructuring of the advising resources to better support students, an overhaul of the orientation portion of the college experience, continued commitment to employee development, including the implementation of portfolio-based evaluation for all the faculty, the creation of the Midtown Center, and the continued focus on streamlining the registration and onboarding process, and the list goes on. In view of Dr. Law's superior performance as chairman, I would like to move that we extend his employment contract an additional year, as we did in the last several years. This one-year extension would be added to his existing three-year contract, thereby extending his employment agreement with the college to June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
You made the motion, right?
I made the motion.
I second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. While our review is limited to the performance of the president, I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge the tireless efforts of all the faculty and staff. Dr. Law continues to praise his staff and has even acknowledged how wonderful it is to work with this team of professionals. I think his quote was, this is the best time he's had in many years of working. So on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank the entire executive staff and the entire staff of St. Pete College. It was an excellent year. Thank you very much. Comments, board members?
Good.
Good. Mr. President?
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it extraordinarily well. I am, in fact, enjoying the work in my chosen profession at the highest level it's ever been. I think if you ask me, that list of accomplishments is something that, I hope there's nothing on there that board members don't feel some ownership in. We have worked exceptionally well as a board, a president, an administrative team, a faculty and staff, and others. We are growing our talent and our approach to serving students. I can't be prouder of the work that we're seeing with people moving up in their career and taking on new duties and responsibilities. And I thank everybody for the support that you've given me. I'm nowhere near the end here. I'm ready to keep going, so thank you for extending my contract for yet one more year.
Only if you turn the AC up next meeting. I'm dying.
I have vice presidents who handle these matters.
I'm about to start a fire with all the paper over here.
Mr. Chair.
It's going to be next week. Next week, my quarter were sleeves. Burn it up.
We're going to be like stripping.
Now we move to the un-agenda items, board members.
I have one quick thing. If the board would indulge me for one second. You know, we didn't get our funding for this building and just, we pushed very hard to get our Midtown funding. We need to push just as hard. This is probably one of the oldest buildings in our inventory on this Gibbs campus. And I would ask the board, I would love to have the opportunity to go with Dr. Law to meet with Senator Gates, but I'm sure Dr. Law doesn't want to ride with me to Pensacola in a car. So if the board would approve us traveling together to try to get this building done for next session and the other ones, we can just drive and see. They're pretty close. Pensacola's a pretty long way. I'm taking approved travel for us to go to see Senator Gates for Ed Approx for next year.
I don't have any objection to that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
The board trustees has to approve travel.
No, but I want to... You should be aware. Just want to make sure.
Go.
Run.
See ya. Run.
Fly.
Ms. Chairman, as we finish, August first is the community celebration for downtown Midtown. The planning is going great guns. I think we have started, the staff was in there today, or yesterday, today, okay? So we took effective control. We are organizing an event, a much more closely-held event, the evening before with some of the people who've been very instrumental in helping us. So you have an invitation to that event and we're, it's a stratified list. There's some people we have to say a special thanks to, not just at the community event. So we shall see you there.
Okay, sir, anything else? For your president's report?
No, that's all. I'm done, yeah.
You've got it, Mark. Next meeting is August eighteenth. We hope to see one at the opening August first, so I'll say this meeting is closed, but we will reopen, we're going to open a St. Pete Collegiate Meeting.
That's right, that's right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Law. I'm fine, thank you, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I'm Starla Metz, the principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, and I would like to share some brief highlights with you, as well as bring forth a proposed budget for your review, and I'm requesting approval. On the left is Bernadette Mead. She was the SPC Apollo Award finalist for the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus and a Bank of America student leader. Bernadette received a paid internship this summer and is attending the Bank of America week-long leadership retreat in Washington, DC. I'd like to share some highlights of our senior class. Our students were awarded two-point-four million dollars in scholarships. Our thirty-seven seniors held a leadership position in an SPC club or organization, or an SPCHS, or a community club or organization. Sixty-five percent of our seniors graduated with honors. Unfortunately, our current graduation rates are a little lower than normal. Our high school graduation rate is ninety-five percent and our AA graduation rate is eighty-four percent. However, we had five of our students that were homeless or living on their own, working almost full-time, their senior year to get through. We had one student who had significant health issues and we had some other students that had outside issues in their home life that impacted their academic performance. The good news is, they are all enrolled in summer courses. We have put all of our resources and support behind them during their senior year and they are on track to graduate this summer. So I anticipate that our high school graduation rate will be one-hundred percent and our AA graduation rate will be ninety-six to ninety-eight percent by the end of the summer term. Some notable colleges that our seniors will be attending in the fall, American University, Brigham Young University, Northwestern University, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, and John Cabot University in Rome. One of our students who did the high school study abroad trip has applied and been accepted and her parents reluctantly are letting her go, so she is thrilled to be able to attend John Cabot in the fall. Service and leadership are hallmarks at the Collegiate High School. In the top picture is a new initiative this year. Our students created boredom buster kits for the patients at all childrens. They purchased toys and books and wrote cards of encouragement and we've donated these to all childrens so that when a patient has a difficult procedure or particularly rough day when they're having treatment, there's a little something there the staff can give them to lift their spirits. And then the picture below is a picture of Aretha Canyon. She is our senior class president and she is teaching elementary-age students about financial literacy through the Junior Achievement Program. Our students were recognized this year because they created two models for JA, which will be replicated at other high schools next year, a senior leadership model and a recycling program. So I'm very pleased that our students this year gave twelve-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five hours of service, impacting one-hundred-and-thirty Pinellas County School elementary classrooms, and touching two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-five students, teaching them financial literacy. On our next slide, we have two sophomores on the left. These two students are the only two high school students that were selected by the city of St. Petersburg as part of their Sister City Initiative, and they will be going to Takamatsu, Japan for three weeks this summer. They will be meeting with dignitaries and the mayor of Takamatsu. They will be attending high school and enjoying cultural activities with their host families. Upon their return, they will be making a presentation to the city of St. Petersburg City Council and the International Relations Committee, as well as talking to civic groups and schools. And then on the right, we have two of our wonderful sophomores, Meg Fister and Taylor Ballard. They participated in the regional stock market game and they won first and second place. There were over one-hundred-and-twenty-four teams who competed and SPCHS sophomores received eight of the top ten awards under the leadership of Mr. John Hestine, our social science instructor. And finally, with great pride, I'd like to share some good news about Amy Rice, SPCHS and SPC class of two thousand and eight. Amy Rice is, has just notified us that she is the recipient of the Pritzker Research Fellow in the PhD program in the area of physics at the Illinois Institute of Technology. This is the most prestigious fellowship that they offer and in addition to full tuition, Amy will be receiving a stipend of thirty-thousand dollars a year with an additional two-thousand dollars a year for research-related activities. And this award is renewable for four years. It's a four-year award for Amy. So we are certainly very proud and SPC should be very proud of Amy Rice. And then, of course, we continue to be a bronze-level school and this year, Newsweek has reached out to us and we have supplied the initial data to be nationally ranked by Newsweek. Are there any questions on this part before we go forward with the budget? Next, I know it's very small. I would like to present the budget to you for the two thousand and fifteen school year. Total funding is one-million-four-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. Total personnel cost is nine-hundred-twenty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. That does reflect the increase. And then current expense is five-hundred-thirty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars with a total budget of one-million-four-hundred-sixty-one dollars-seven-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. And you can see at the bottom, that still leaves healthy reserves. Do you have any questions for me?
I move that we accept the Prolezia High Schools report and budget as given to us by the principal here and we're ready to go.
Properly moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Is that sufficient? Is that what the law requires, is for us to accept the budget?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And this... And at this point, we're adjourned.
Thank you.